It is 6 o'clock. It is time to call the Sherwood City Council being to order. At this time, I would like to ask Wendy Daniels, Pastor North Plaskett Methodist Church, to come forward and lead us in our prayer tonight.
Holy God, we've paused before the work of this day, asking for you to remind us of our power to seek the welfare of this city. We acknowledge the many burdens we carry into this work. Attend to them, oh God. We pray for these elected officials entrusted with the holy calling of public service. Keep them pure in heart. We pray for the residents of this city. Only one less the work that is before this city council today. Remind us of the truth of Jeremiah, that in the welfare of the city, we will find our own welfare. In all we do and all we say, may we seek the welfare of this city. I pray in the powerful name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Plague allegiance?
Plague allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, and to the Lord God, who is the Father, and who is the Son, and who is the Holy Spirit, and who is the God of this world.
Call the roll, please. Brooks?
Here.
Harmon?
Here.
Lilly?
Here.
McMen?
Aye.
Sanders?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Roderick?
Here.
Approval of minutes of the regular meeting on July 22nd, 2019, as transcribed. So moved?
Second.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMen?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
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 Williams?
Aye.
Roderick?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Lilly?
Aye.
In your packets, you have copies of July 2019 financials. Are there any questions, discussions? During the next autumn, Committees and Commissions, Advertising and Promotion Commission. We did meet, and the minutes are in the packet. If anyone has any questions on the minutes, otherwise, we will meet next month, first Wednesday of the month, at 3:00 PM, at the Bill Harmon Rec Center. And we do have an ordinance.
An ordinance establishing an entertainment district within the city of Sherwood, Arkansas, pursuant to Act 812 of 2019, and for other purposes, first reading.
I just had one question. And Steve, you might know the answer to it. I think it's great that we're trying this and everything. I just had a question. What the, is it called the ABC School?
What? What Hills Services?
Yes. For, is that included in the entertainment? Does it look like on the map it was? And I just wasn't sure if a school like that, if that would affect...
Too close. I was thinking too close. I mean, I think that's what you're asking if it's too close.
Well, if it, it looks like it's actually in it, and if so, I was thinking if we just kind of carved that out, because I just don't know if the school would be allowed to be in an entertainment district, but...
It's in there, because that's Fred Raines Drive, and that's included there along Fred Raines Drive. So I would assume that that's the school, is it not?
I'm just, I'm looking, getting my glasses on real fast. It looked like it was. So, the reason why we encompass that, and Colleen Carr, Economic Development Director, can come here to speak to us. She's actually the one who is the brainchild behind all this. But we're trying to encompass it to go back as far as our animal shelter and our Public Works Department, in case for, in the future, if the Public Works area becomes open. And so I know that's why, and this was, math was drawn up by Dennis, our GSI guy, he drew the math up, but I'll let Colleen expand on this.
And to answer some of that, the hours of this district, this will not be during full hours. So although it's planned over, it won't work at the same time. It'll be after 5:00 and on weekends, because although, so it kind of isn't there really full time.
Right. Well, my only concern with it was just, you know, potential littering on there, as people are potentially walking through. And then I just didn't know, since there's such rules in terms of alcohol and where things can be located and not located, in terms of churches and stuff like that. I just didn't know how legally, if that was a problem or not. If it's not, and they don't care, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Well, there was a restaurant there before, at the corner of Fred Raines Drive, Jojo's, that did serve beer and wine. So they, there had been beer and wine served there in close proximity to the school in the past. And a restaurant is getting ready to open this week, that's also going to be serving beer and wine, that's also within, but these boundaries were submitted to the ABC. Is that correct, Steve?
They weren't so much interested in the boundaries as they were that we encompassed an area that had on premises, restaurants that already had on premises permits. And it has to be within areas where it would be legal to zone it anyway, or would be zoned properly. And we may have to tweak this over time.
My understanding, we're only reading it for the first time tonight, anyway, so we've got till next, we can read it, and those questions could be checked on. Because, Colleen, when I talk to you, as I understood, this car, that you encompassed the commercial areas, and schools are allowed to be in a commercial area. So that may be why that overlap is just thinking about commercial areas, which is where your goal was, my understanding, correct? But I didn't think, I thought we were going to read this, I didn't know we were just going to read this one time tonight. Because we have some, part of this interest in this is in the open lot, which we call the Metropolitan Lot, or the Old Bowling Alley Lot. The group in that lot is wanting to start food trucks. And in order to start the food trucks, that part of this entertainment district, we have to pass this, because that is a separate category under AMP for an AMP license. We have different licenses for brick and mortar versus food trucks for AMP licenses. And if we pass it tonight, that's still going to give them 30 days, we'll have a 30-day window, because there's no emergency clause. So that'll give 30 days before any of these food trucks can locate. But if we read it only one time tonight, then these food trucks are also put off again. And I know we've got some great interest. I know that people have come into the city clerk's office, or called the city clerk's office, inquiring on the permit. So, and this is a permit for a food truck. It's not anything to do with alcohol.
And, Colleen said this will only operate after 5:00 and on the weekends.
We're going to get to find the exact hours, more on like a holiday weekend, or a term of duty, but we have to have this lined up, and we will. It won't be a 24-hour and a half open, but you'll have restrictions.
Because I noticed that the food trucks, this apparently is going to supersede our ordinance that we have regarding restrictions on food trucks.
That is correct.
Food vendors, and things of that nature, that restrict when they, you know, that they have to pack up and leave. So it's going to allow them to sit overnight 24 hours, and things of that nature. So, I guess they're going to sit, if we don't, if we only allow it to open for, after 5:00, they're going to sit idle for... No, that won't affect their business. That's a separate category. The district is just the alcohol regulation. Okay, so the food trucks will sit there and can operate?
Well, per the minutes of AMP.
Okay.
Per y'all's minutes in AMP, it said that those food trucks would have a one-year lease, I mean, one-year lease with this vendor versus the six months.
That was confusing.
Because they're in the district. Right.
That was confusing.
And those times are delineated in that, in that minutes as well, and the special events for like New Year's Eve, Valentine's Day, and some other events that y'all, that y'all tweak, but which, as you said, from your future AMP meetings, may add other things. We could. And we could also take away, too. Where this is a learning process, and, I mean, tonight, the main thing is, we want to allow those food trucks to operate as soon as possible. And this is not all just about alcohol. The entertainment district is not all alcohol-driven, so.
Did, I know we had talked about, that you were going to be talking to the Pineapple Whip, people to see if, because that was the reason for having it go across 107, because, and as I mentioned to you, I feel like there's some safety things in terms of, if we do potentially have people walking around with alcoholic beverages, and that's our busiest, one of our busiest intersections and areas in terms of traffic.
Can I speak to that just for a second?
Yeah.
I don't think that the vision at this point is that there would be an event that would encompass the entire district. What the thinking is, Colleen, tell me if I'm wrong, we're thinking that perhaps there might be an event at the Old Bowling Alley, where there might be several food trucks there. An event there, maybe music, something to that effect. Or, maybe up at Gadwall's, with that property up there. And we've got a pretty good-sized golf parking lot there at the Greens and North Hills, that would support probably an outdoor party, that would need this type of regulation, or they couldn't serve outside, that bar would be in violation. So that's, we're thinking about just encompassing more than one spot.
And I understand that. I just don't understand on the other side, like, why we have a storage unit place, and a bank, and a Taco Bell, versus, you know, drawing it toward, it kind of stays more in that, that area.
We're open, I mean, we're figuring this out. The thinking on that is, I drew it, big as I thought it would ever be, which was my thought, rather than trying to scale it bigger after we find out. I thought we'd make it big, and then only use what we need to use. The thinking on that side of the road is, because Pineapple Whip is already organic, we started a food truck every year, if, in the big vision, if the Metropolitan Lot is used, and actually becomes a brick and mortar one day, it's an overflow lot, or another place to have our food trucks gather. And I do not disagree, and I understand it's a cross-over the road. Because we have control over this, I think we're going to have to control, have a festival on this side of the road, or a festival on this side of the road. We're not going to have a huge festival on all five sides at the same time. So, because, in our power, set these up, we're not going to have it open. So that's why we left that side of it, overflow and future. I really hope we can, brick and mortar go over there on the Metropolitan and Gadwall side, and they still give us a lot where we can have our festival.
Is there an opportunity, like, in the future? Is this like a one-and-done, in terms of we can have one entertainment area?
No, the law says. The law says you can have several different areas.
And you can do...
And I guess I don't understand the, like, because then we could, we could, in theory, zone that area.
I just, like I said, my thought was, let's draw the boundaries, because we would use it, and only use what we need, until we get that.
The thought, now, and I think you're right. The Pineapple Whip, for instance, I'm just using them as an example, they're already established over there. So what are we going to say? We're going to give everybody on the other side of the road a year lease, and guess what, Pineapple Whip, you've got to go in six months. And that's what they would have to do. We're trying to be fair to them also, and to use that as an overflow area. We're not saying, again, this is not about just alcohol. This is about food trucks as well. Now, I think that's where a lot of people are getting all confused over. We're not saying everybody's going to walk across 107 with a beer. We're saying, possibly, you could have a beer over at Pineapple Whip. But that's not our intention, is to create traffic problems, pedestrian problems. Our intention is to draw commerce to our city, and to give our city some quality of life. Everybody's all saying, there's nothing to do in Sherwood. I don't know how many times I hear that. And we've got, we're trying to work on something. It may not be perfect. We're not saying it is. I know that we're all, most of us are human, and we do make mistakes. It may not be right the first time, but we're going to work on it to get it right. And Colleen has worked very hard on it, with her committee, and that includes Stacy Galaway and others. We have several business people on that committee, that were involved in the discussions, and all this came from the committee before it came to AMP. So, Colleen, will you speak to, did you say that Metropolitan is open to building even maybe a temporary stage, but something where we could have concerts, or?
Yes, there, and nothing, nothing is finalized, but the vision, that like the first step would be that we have a food truck there, and then we build some type of stage there, where the chamber, or the city post, festival, that would be the special event on the special weekend. So, we have a thing with fans coming in. And so that would draw people there, and get the mindset to start hanging out in that area. And then, I mean, it's focused on the pay, and they're open to incorporating visually, they're building into this whole quality of life, quality of place area. And so ultimately, the shopping group may see that this is so good, that they might put in some kind of a mixed use right there in that lot, which would be perfectly, let me do the picture. So, that's like the ultimate goal, and then, that would displace us, to have no work with the food trucks. We wouldn't like to do that stuff. That's, that's the thing. But again, I told, I need and hear and love all the feedback, so Sherwood's very...
Well, I know there's already efforts to establish electricity on one of the corners, and they're kind of, they're not going to fund a lot of money into that, because they have the go-ahead from the city that we're, we are going to embrace.
There are a lot of people...
Are there any other places in the city where we have food trucks? Because I, I thought sometimes there's some over in the Indian Head Shopping Center, and...
I think there's a lot of places around, but we're trying to make a gathering.
Right now, we have several different AMP categories. So there's a brick and mortar category, which should be your restaurants like Two Sisters, they stay in the same place every day, they're not going to go anywhere, if they're up there at Brick and Mortar. Then you have your mobile food vendors. Mobile food vendors are required to pick up and go every night. That means if they pull into a parking lot at Indian Head, or if they pull into a parking lot down at Walmart, they have to go the next day. We also then have a seasonal vendor, and the seasonal vendors are given six months. And those are usually like your Snow Cone, your Polar Delight, and your Pineapple Whip. They come in, they apply for a seasonal AMP permit, and they have six months from the day they start their business till they end their business. So there may be some vendors down at Indian Head, or wherever, that have applied for a seasonal permit, and they can do that, under this provision for seasonal permits. This particular permit will allow a vendor to stay in the same location for up to a year, based on the lease they have with Metropolitan. And that is, or, if it happens to be in the Harvest Food, Old Harvest Food Parking Lot, that's a different owner. They will have, work out their own provisions, whatever they want to lease it for. The lease is signed with the actual property owner, and they should abide by our AMP rules. I know that when, when several of us were at the Municipal League, earlier in May, June, whenever that was, and they were sharing the law that went into play, that explained the entertainment district, how it was, first thing I did was bring back a copy of that law. And Colleen said, this is what you're asking for, the quality of life issue. And I know you guys on the AMP Commission have been implementing that. In your minutes, definitely, from your meetings the other day, just defined exactly what you just said, everything about this. So, I mean, I think it's a great idea, and knowing, I mean, even Steve, your minutes in the thing commented that you can have, a city can have more than one location. You can start now, see how it works, see where something else may be acceptable for it, what needs to grow. So, on that page two, you've outlined in the link, everything has been said right here. So I think, you know, you should be commended for turning something around in eight weeks, from when the law just got passed, and explained everybody, 10 weeks, whether it was. So, thank you.
And then your safety net, too. If it doesn't work, I mean, it's written, Steve's written in here that the police or the firemen, or chief of firemen can...
And they cut it down. And the council.
The way that I read this, and looking at Section 3 on the first page, on the dates that the property will operate as a Sherwood Entertainment District, comma, I mean, that was, that's telling me that there's going to be dates, specific dates, that this area will be operated as an entertainment district. Other than those dates, then, I mean, it would default back to it's, it's regular zoning, or whatever. What I, you know, the more I hear, the more questions I get, you know, brought up in my brain, like, you know, can someone at any given time walk, walk outside of Rockies and carry their, their alcoholic beverage across the street? So, so what limits that? I mean, I don't...
All those beverages, we define it, if it's 5:00 on Friday afternoon, until 11:00 on Friday, and then I make it a little more now, 10:00 to 11:00.
5 to 11.
We, and if you look at Little Rock, they've done a really good job, we are performing from, and watching, very carefully, but that would be defined hours.
So, so then...
And they have to have a cup, or Lily's, I think, so they have...
Yeah, that's fine, Danny, but then also, you know, trying to link Section 3, you know, to Section 6 with the, the mobile vendors. I mean, again, I'm thinking in terms of, okay, you're going to define, you know, X dates, you know, for it to be an entertainment district, you know, that the, the mobile vendors would go set up through those dates, and then, once those dates are gone, you know, they, they got to leave. That's not the...
No, Section 3 states, it's just about alcohol. You read the whole Section 3, it's, it's, all Section 3 deals with, is the alcohol part of it.
Yeah, but Section 3 says that, that dates, on the dates that the property will operate as a Sherwood Entertainment District.
And it goes in a, say, comma, it's about the purchasing consumption of alcoholic beverages.
But that, that's leading me to believe that there are specific dates, that it will be an entertainment district. The other dates that are not included in that, it's not an entertainment district. That's what confused me as well. That's why I was confused about the food truck section, about why the few, how the food trucks wouldn't operate after 5:00, until 5:00, and things of that nature. I was confused by those two.
Steve, do you want to clear this up? Since she wrote the ordinance?
Okay.
I may go.
The food trucks, the concept of, of the district is twofold. One is to allow for the consumption of alcohol outside of the businesses. There will be dates that those will apply. But it will be, if you pass this tonight, this will become the district. It will be the district all the time. It will not be operating as a district all the time, and...
For the purpose of alcohol.
Yes. The draw for, and we keep saying Metropolitan, it's not just Metropolitan, it's the landlords that would be within the district. They see a benefit to be able to carve out portions of their property to lease to businesses, if they're allowed to stay, and don't have to pull up stakes every night. So that's why we wrote an exception in Section 6, that says, if you're in the district, we're not going to apply that rule to you, we're going to let you stay. And, and that's irrelevant to the alcohol sales. Then the district, Sherwood, the city of Sherwood and the Economic Development will get together and decide on dates for events, and those dates will be advertised and publicized, and those will be the dates for the actual entertainment district, when it will operate, and the alcohol consumption part kicks in. The rest of the time, if you're in the district and you're a food truck, you can stay.
Colleen, is it correct that only, currently in this district, there's three restaurants that sell alcohol? Those are the only three? So if there was going to be a concert there at the Old Bowling Alley, Gadwall's could set up and sell beer, because they have a license, but I can't go set a tent up and sell beer? It's only Gadwall's, Rockies, or Joey's?
Well, actually, you're, you're almost correct.
Okay.
They can't set up there. You have to buy in their business to carry out.
Okay.
So that's why we've got Rockies, we've got Gadwall's, we've got the golf...
But it's only three businesses.
By now, yes.
I mean, so, it's smaller than just people coming and setting up a beer truck, and, you know...
There will not be any beer sold out of trucks. It has to be on premises.
I think there's some confusion, though, that maybe the alcohol part is very small.
And that's what I just want to get across, this is not just about alcohol. And this is about the quality of life, and trying to get some food trucks and build something up there, to have some entertainment. And create a destination, we hope to have concerts, we may, we may not, who knows? You don't know until you try. I know Jacksonville already has an entertainment district, Cabot has an entertainment district. So, you know, those are smaller cities to us, and then you go across, of course, Little Rock already has one, there's cities like El Dorado, so we're not the first, and we are going to learn from those who are before us.
My understanding on this, Marina, is, if I heard you right, is it's only for those that are established. Somebody else cannot come in and build a brick and mortar, at this point. They can, or they can't?
They can.
Yes, they can.
They could, still, in that district, and they would have to get permission for them to be able to sell alcohol there, but, I mean, that's...
Okay, I misunderstood what you said.
But they would have to be...
And it'd have to be a restaurant. It couldn't, like, the, the proposed gas station that's going to be going in the corner. They, you cannot buy alcohol at that particular location and walk around with an open beer can that you purchased at that corner.
Right.
It has to be from a restaurant.
So, what happens when I purchase my cup? Is it a different cup, every, every event?
Yes. No, we're going to keep, we're learning. Don't let me tell you that I've got to do that, but what we're learning is, they're going to be disposed. So every time you buy it, you have to, the key flashes up, and they're clear, and they're labeled, show where they're headed, on it. So it's just to help police, and the army, to get our mandate in.
Ordinance has been run one time.
Move suspend the rules and place on second reading?
Second.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMen?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Aye. Williams?
Aye.
Roderick?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Lilly?
Aye.
An ordinance establishing an entertainment district within the city of Sherwood, Arkansas, pursuant to Act 812 of 2019, and for other purposes, second reading.
Move suspend the rules and place on third reading?
Second.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMen?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Aye. Williams?
Aye.
Roderick?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Lilly?
Aye.
An ordinance establishing an entertainment district within the city of Sherwood, Arkansas, pursuant to Act 812 of 2019, and for other purposes, third reading.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Harmon?
Aye.
McMen?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Aye. Williams?
Aye.
Roderick?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Lilly?
Aye.
There is not an emergency.
Oh, there's not going to be one, but, that's the other one.
Right.
Civil Service Commission? Parks and Recreation Committee?
We had a meeting last month. The minutes are in your packet. It really does say pickleball on the minutes. If you have any questions, feel free to answer them.
There was a great article in the paper on the style section about pickleball the other day. It was hilarious. I loved it.
Marina brought me a copy of that, yeah. It's apparently a real up and, real blowing and going activity, and we're going to try to get, try to get into it, try to see if we can maybe use that for Hinson Park, part of the revitalization of Hinson Park, when we opened the new tennis center, is what we're looking at. But if you have any questions about the minutes, otherwise, if we have business, the next meeting will be the second Monday of the next month, at 6:00, at the Bill Harmon Rec Center.
Thank you. Personnel Committee?
We did meet, and thank you for, Alderman, Williams, for sitting in for me on that. I was out of town, unfortunately. But we will meet September the 5th, 5:30, at the Bill Harmon Rec Center. We do have something we need to talk about.
Were there minutes? We've not met to approve them.
Yeah. We do have them.
Thank you. Plan Information?
Members of the council, last month, we had the next item on the small cell, and then subsequent to that, or during that meeting, you asked for other information and input, and then we've had a workshop this past Thursday, and based on the workshop, we drafted a new ordinance. May I have a motion to substitute?
So moved.
Second. Harmon?
Aye.
McMen?
Hi.
McMen?
Hi.
Sanders?
Hi.
Hi.
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Roderick?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Lilly?
Aye.
An ordinance providing for the installation of small cell wireless facilities to be placed in the city rights of way in the city of Sherwood, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes, that is the first reading.
I have a question here on this. Is this, uh, the one that we got the other night and the one that we had, the one was in our program and the one was laying on the table? Are they both the same?
What's in your program is the old one?
I'm sorry.
Why is it in our minutes?
This is the new one.
This is the, this is the official one, the one that's on your table. That's the one we're substituting in.
The one tonight?
Which is a result of the workshop.
Right, right.
Um, it's a good workshop.
Do we need to, don't, don't we need to do something about this tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Move for second reading? We do not do this tonight. We will live with whatever's handed to us.
So we have a motion to go to the second reading?
Second reading, please.
Is there our second?
Yes, again. Harmon?
Hi.
McMen?
Hi.
Sanders?
Hi.
Hi.
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Roderick?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Lilly?
Substantive.
An ordinance providing for the installation of a small cell wireless facilities to be placed in the city rights of way in the city of Sherwood, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes, that's the second reading.
Let's suspend the rules, put on third reading.
Second.
Harmon?
Hi.
McMen?
Hi.
Sanders?
Hi.
Hi.
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Roderick?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Lilly?
Substantive.
An ordinance providing for the installation of a small cell wireless facilities to be placed in city rights of way in the city of Sherwood, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes, that is the third reading. Move for the adoption.
Second.
Harmon?
Hi.
McMen?
Hi.
Sanders?
Hi.
Hi. Williams?
Aye.
Roderick?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Lilly?
Substantive.
And there is an emergency clause.
Harmon?
Hi.
McMen?
Hi.
Sanders?
Hi.
Hi.
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Roderick?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Lilly?
Substantive.
And Angela, just for the sake of that, what's three readings on that?
Yes.
Okay. An ordinance amending the official zoning district map and for other purposes with respect to Powhatan Drive and Warden Road. First reading.
Can't imagine it could be. We had two, um, business owners who have asked to be recognized that would like to address the council tonight. The first will be Terry Bean, and followed by Mr. Don Harris.
Hi, uh, I'm Terry Bean. Uh, I'm the owner of Sherwood Substore. U-Haul, uh, yes, it's a great company. Uh, I have not been to this U-Haul whatsoever.
Can you speak a little bit closer to that microphone? Thank you.
I use U-Haul a lot. I've rented their trailers from, uh, a couple weeks ago. Uh, I had a fire ditch that I need to put on my truck, uh, or to put in U-Haul. So they're, they're very handy. They're one of the top, the top stores, uh, if you want to move across town or whatever. That's the go-to place to, to go. Um, they also have, uh, Story Jones sign, uh, they have full standard units, one, twelve units available for people to store there. Uh, so I, I think that, uh, that they're a well-run company. They've got great software. Uh, their pricing, uh, uh, you know, is set based on what their unit demand is. Uh, what I don't understand is why they would want to put a whole bunch of units right in the middle of four, four facilities, there's only two thousand. Units available right in that very area within a half a mile of each other. All of them are right near 167. Uh, my property is less than a quarter of a mile away from 167. Uh, and, uh, I've been in Sherwood for a long time. I've been paying taxes here since 1981. Uh, this year I'm paying, uh, over $60,000 in taxes in Sherwood. That's over 5,000 a month. As you know, cash flow in a storage facility or any real estate business is, uh, is what keeps the business going. Uh, it provides the money for, uh, upkeep and maintenance, uh, and provide good services for customers. My, my thinking is this, that from a city's viewpoint, overbuilding in an area is not helpful for the city. Because what's, what happens is that, uh, uh, have a company with an initial reputation, uh, at deep pockets, they're listed on the S X, they can charge whatever they want to fill at their place. And it's going to have a direct effect on the other facilities here and there. So, so what do the other facilities have a chance to do? Uh, cut prices, cut their cash flow, cut their expenses. Uh, it's not good for the areas. That particular area is not one of high development. You don't see a whole lot of businesses or residences or anything else going in. Uh, it's a slow go. Uh, and right now, rental, uh, none of the, none of the facilities are falling. And the rental rates are slow from our experience. Other properties have asked for, uh, improved zoning in the area. Other competitors just see all of that as far, um, a couple that I know of have been turned down even though they're very close to 167 and are in direct competition.
Sorry, you have one minute left in your time. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, so that kind of wraps it up. My thoughts on from a business standpoint, uh, what you're being asked.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Don?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Don Harris, American Storage. Uh, just a few, a few short months ago, there was, uh, another competitor wanting to expand, and one of the points made was that we have 3,200 units. Uh, there's already been approval for an 800 unit complex upon 107. That's 4,000 units. You know, somebody expand anymore, somebody's liable to fall. You know, you don't want to kill the little guy till he's the big guy. But there's other problems here. Uh, it's traffic. Uh, you've got a residential area. There's townhouses through there. There's children. You've got a daycare center. And I don't know if you've ever seen some of the people who, they just don't know how to drive. 24, 26, 28 foot U-Haul trucks there. They, they try to take off. All of a sudden, that thing you know, that bouncing, you know, bouncing guests. You've got a noise problem there. Uh, they've got their tow dollys, they've got their, uh, that are rattling constantly. They're car trailers. Uh, they're going through a residential area. There's 28 units immediately on Powhatan Drive. There's 20 on the front with, uh, eight in a little alleyway directly behind it, and that doesn't count. The duplexes on Laramie Court. There is a sound detriment as well as the vibration of all these heavy trucks going down through there. Uh, I don't think all this was taken into consideration. It could make the townhouses, uh, if you increase the traffic three, possibly four times as much, it's going to make those unbearable living. It's going to affect the, uh, the owners of those buildings. Uh, it, it won't be good, uh, and possibly bring financial harm to them. And, uh, you know, uh, constantly decreasing the land values too potentially. And there again, if, if it's allowed, it could be liability on the city's part, uh, due to turning a city street into a, uh, near impossible commercial byway, in my opinion. Uh, it'll, it'll also create another, there's, traffic is bad enough. You've got cars coming off the freeway and crossing over the lane on Warden Road, which by the way, I saw no, uh, signs for the, uh, change of zoning on Warden Road. I saw them on Powhatan Drive, and there was nothing, nothing laying down on Warden Road, uh, as if they'd potentially got knocked over. So, uh, and there's already a hard time merging and people trying to pull out of U-Haul now with these vehicles and, and pull in, crossing lanes. Uh, it's just going to make the traffic that much worse, much less going back up to, uh, taking the loop back up to Keel Avenue with the red light. Now, there's, there's other sites that are more desirable for this type of business for this, you know, with the trucks and everything. Um, I'm asking that you vote against it, you know, for the people who live in that area. Like I said, uh, don't let the big business run over the, the residents or the little guys. We don't want somebody to fall in our, uh, within our industry.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I'll have, I'm sorry. Did y'all have any questions for me?
I don't think so. Thank you, sir. What's the pleasure of the council?
I got a real quick question, Drew. I guess Richard, maybe, Richard, maybe you can answer this. But on Powhatan Drive, do you know, you probably don't know this, will there be any entry ways into that facility from Powhatan? Or will it just be all in the front?
I have not seen any, I have not seen any site plans on it.
Yes, sir. You're, are you the, um, owner of the property?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, sir. Please. Please state your name when you come to the, sorry.
I'm actually here to protect, I'm the president of U-Haul of Arkansas. Uh, when it comes to the vehicles that the gentleman was speaking of, there are, that's not going to change. Uh, what we're actually looking at doing is expanding our property just due to the fact that we are 100% full. We have a waiting for this, that's why we're starting to see. Uh, when it comes to, as you were saying, the little guy, we partner with the little guys. I've got over 200 locations in the state of Arkansas. About 15 of them are in, 15 operate in the special center. Bottom of our, so we're not trying to run over the little guy at all. We actually partner, actually, when it comes to our pricing, actually, they're way higher than, so when you get around here, we're still 100% full. So them saying they got to take, drop their pricing down, that's an, we're already with the price compared to them. Which is not true. Switch it them by tango. You will-
Sir, I would ask that you, let's, let's not get into debate here. Let's, let's talk to the council.
I apologize.
Okay.
But, I mean, that's just one of the things. You know, when it comes to entrance, applies about entrance, we actually have it planted exactly how we want to set up the facility because we want to do a zoning. There was actually a lot of, uh, and back and forth that's part of property because it was trust. So at certain times, we're actually stating stated now. Reason we went for the rezoning is because we suggested some fire planning. We've been just answering this huge permit of rezoning for just a few days. We're not trying to overrun the little guys at all. We work with the little guys. That's what we, I was just at the Arkansas Storage Association conference last week. We're helping the little guys. That's what we do.
I've got a question. Is there, to piggyback on what Mike was asking, is there currently an ingress egress on that side street?
Not currently.
Not currently, no?
Maybe something that we've looked at doing, have not determined what we're going to do.
Richard, are they allowed to, um, since they're already on that? Are they allowed to have an ingress egress on their current property on that road? Is there any zoning, a reason why they're not?
According to the zoning, that, uh, I don't think that's the issue. When they bring the site plan in, we will be looking at the classification of the street and the half-street improvements that they're required to make. Uh, I have not studied that particular question yet, but I know that there's some, uh, grade, uh, filling and things that will need to be done. We've already looked at that on the half, and before they bought the property, that it is possible for an engineering firm to, uh, accurately design those improvements so they can, uh, handle the stormwater in there. There's no floodplanning. As far as widening the road, that would just be part of the site plan, uh, design and site plan review. And, uh, that's what we'll be looking at is for proper design to handle those sizes.
Many years, I'm a- Many years ago, there was a child killed on Powhatan. And, I mean, those that have been around a long time will remember that, um, there are, those apartments or townhouses or whatever you want to call them, there are a lot of children on that street, and a child was run over and killed on that street. So I would be very concerned about any in, any ingress egress on Powhatan for sure. I know you're already driving trucks up and down there, but any additional ingress egress could absolutely, um, be very dangerous to those apartments slash townhouses.
Are, are you all looking at expanding the amount of trucks that?
No.
No. The amount of vehicles doesn't change. The amount of traffic doesn't change. The traffic wouldn't change.
People don't go to the storage every day. Change minimal.
Right. I mean, the, the amount of traffic going down the street, how, change very much. Obviously, first, of course, they'll be building up and, but we used to build up
I don't think that, I'm not really concerned about the increase in traffic. I'm concerned if you build an ingress egress on your new property. That's what I'm concerned about.
And, and the site plan, I'm sure that this is going to exceed $350,000 construction cost, but it just probably from the land preparation point. Uh, so with that, the, uh, planning commission will be reviewing the site plan. It will not be my singular review. And if I may, this is really a two-part issue. First part is the first question facing you tonight. Is C4, kinds of uses that are permitted in C4 appropriate to this location? That's the basis for a rezone. We don't at that point decide whether we've got overcapacity in any particular business classification. We don't ask the question about how are you actually going to design this thing? The question is, is this a, an appropriate use at this location for that kind of zoning? The next question is, once it's been determined that C4 is an appropriate zoning classification at that point, everybody has to submit a site plan. That's at that point where we get into the details about ingress egress, traffic volume. And I will tell you that straw man for traffic congestion, it doesn't happen for storage facilities. But in the final analysis, what the planning commission and staff will be looking at, if this is approved, is, how is the site actually going to be designed? Does it meet city standards and can we keep it safe?
Mayor, thank you. Miss, Mr. Middleton, would you come back up there?
I mean, having driven by that several times and gone, I think I drove around it three times, this kind of look, you know, I totally agree that R1, there's never going to be a house probably ever built there, which is why they zone that correctly right now. So, I mean, it's, it's going to be some kind of commercial. But having just attended in less than a week, the 2040 visioning about how we want to have people perceive from 67, 167 Sherwood, with that being an entrance level on Keel, um, we need things to not be modular looking and to have things looking, um, dumpy, for lack of a better word. Okay? Does that communicate, Mr. Hicks? Um, but, but C4 gives you li- um, flexibility to be cardboard, I mean, metal building. And, and that's where people are going to see coming down south, the first entrance into Sherwood. Now, pardon me on 2040 planning, forget U-Haul, forget anybody, but if it's going to be a storage unit, I'm not sure that's what we want there. But I'm, that's, I need you to hear where my heart is on that, is that we've got to brand city as people enter it from that viewpoint. And our whole thing is to lift it up. Uh, I'm not saying this is a downplay, but I'm just, and I do know, as some of the gentlemen privileged to you tonight have said, we have bukus, because I don't know the exact number, of storage units on Keel. And the appearance of those is anywhere from here to here. Um, and that's the first thing they're going to see going west on Keel. So I'm, I'm eager, Mr. Middleton, to hold y'all's feet to the fire, to make whatever gets approved be what our goal is on that 2040 commission that you're on.
I've heard two separate issues coming from the council over the last year and a half. One is that we care about the perception people are going to have when they enter the city. And the second is that we're not going to put C4 anyplace except along 167, 67. Uh, but the first part of this is met because it's on 67, 167. The second part, we hear you loud and clear about the way it ought to look, and we will be having that discussion with the developer.
Well, and, and that's further discussion with the council. Clearly, we need higher design standards and, uh, ways of making our city look more presentable, but that's a different issue.
Agreed.
So although this, this is in conflict of what you said, but I want to share with what, the phone call that I got today from a constituent, since the, the potential property owner's here speaking, and we know what it's going to be. Their concern is, they're a business owner, and she is concerned about large, um, national companies now with the tax breaks that Trump is offering for depreciation. They're expanding now, getting the tax break, but it's flooding industries. And so it may be, I would be curious to know what Sherwood's capacity is, and are we flooding the, the industry to have more units? Maybe we, we wouldn't use them for 10 or 15 years, but it created a tax break for a large company that can afford that. So that was her concern. I just, I want to let you guys know that. The other concern was, um, having metal, you know, metal building requirement. So.
I could tell you that the fundamental factor was way above my paper.
I just wanted to share what their concern was so that, you know, everyone could know kind of phone calls I'm receiving.
I agree. I can actually say we went actually on the property, we're putting on the property, we're letting the officials, we're not just going to go away. It's U-Haul of Arkansas is mine. Okay? It's, it's mine, so my, my, it's like U-Haul, your national, your, your state, your, your state, your, your state. It's all my package, it's my, it's my, it's my, it becomes Arkansas, it's mine. We have not been released, it's not, that's, I want
I do have a concern also, because I have been to U-Haul several times, it all, I was in the end of things, and having to come down Keel and, and turn left, uh, onto anybody and then turn, uh, any of them, sorry, and then turn right on Powhatan, it, it's really hard to get to. And, uh, you do have to use a residential street to get to the business. And I don't know what can be done about that, but I-
And I don't know what can be done about that, but I, I empathize with our citizens that live on that street. And as Marina talked about, uh, you know, the child that got killed on Powhatan. I mean, as far as the zoning is one thing, what I'm talking about is another. But I do think it needs to seriously be looked at is to see if there's another way to get into U-Haul without having to go down Powhatan. I don't know if there is, but I certainly would like to encourage, uh, you and our people to take a look at it and see, uh, to get it off of that street, get off that residential street, if it's possible.
So, so I, I believe, now, I don't recall specifically, but I believe the existing facility has a gate on Powhatan. Does it not?
There's access to it.
Okay. I've never seen them open, but I thought there, there, there is a gate there. Okay. Um, the, the only other question that I've got, I mean, as far as the, you know, what's on 67-167, I mean, there, there's only really, uh, I'm going to say small because I'm looking at a small picture. Um, but, but there's, there's only a, a, a small portion of, of that property that, that actually sits on 67-167. The rest of it is, is, is on, I mean, i- is on a, a residential type street. Um, now, it, it is on C3 currently, as I understand it. I mean, I believe you said it was maybe residential.
I thought it was residential.
I, I believe it says.
Well, look, well, looking in the minutes from the planning commission, they say all three plots were R1 being code re-changes R3 and R4. But in the ordinance, it says from C3 to C4.
General commercial to C, yeah. So I, that's, that's what I went by. So what, what, what is the current property zone?
It's, it's convoluted. Is that what you said, Richard? Okay, it's convoluted.
Well, well, then, then the ordinance needs to unconvolute it. Um, I mean, that, that's, that's misleading, uh, in my opinion. And that's a problem.
Since, well, then maybe we have our first reading and that's it today. See what needs to be tweaked?
My recollection of this at the planning commission, I don't have those records in front of me, but my recollection is the three lots that were requested to be rezoned, those three lots are R1. If there's some C3 there, I don't recall it being requested to go to C4, but you may have been doing that to catch up with the current regulations regarding outdoor storage. Because you have had to, had a C3 conditional to maintain compliant with the outdoor storage to today's standard. And to bring it all to C4 would cover the existing C3 as well as correctly rezon the R1.
The three grassy lots are all right now R1, correct?
My recollection of this, yes.
That's, that's what it looks like. Man, you're right. It's all just said, I mean, there's nothing about R1 anywhere in the ordinance at all.
Sounds like we need to get some clarification before we.
Just have one rating tonight.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, mayor, that is the agenda.
All right. Thank you. Senior Citizens Committee?
Uh, we didn't have a meeting. We will have one October the 15th at 4:30.
Thank you. Sherwood Wastewater Treatment Committee, Street Committee?
Uh, Street Committee did meet. The un, unapproved minutes are, are in your packet. Um, you know, still a lot of work going on trying to get our engineering, everything rolling for the, the street improvements that, that we've, we've been planning for quite some time now. So, uh, no, no lack of activity on the Street Committee.
Oh, sorry. Can I ask a question, ma'am? Um, the, and, and probably Richard or whoever could speak on this. So the, the study that's being done regarding the traffic on Rockington and East Keel, uh, where it, it ju, in the minutes, where, where are we exactly on that? Do we have any more? Because.
Which, which minutes are you referring to?
The Street Committee minutes from August, uh, that were submitted for August in our packet.
The status of the study that I'm, there's actually two things going on, but the status of the study that involves that location is a partnership between the city and the highway department, 50/50. And it's at the planning department, at the highway department, and they're looking at the entire area. Not only that single intersection, but they're looking at all of Sherwood and how does traffic move into Sherwood and out of Sherwood? And based on that total movement of vehicles, what's the best thing for Keel at Rockington?
Do we, is there any timeframe or anything being communicated with Sherwood as to how long it's going to take for them to evaluate this?
I have not heard from them the last time.
And then one other, um, question. The, um, sidewalk priority list, um, is it possible to get the, that sent out to all the council members?
Absolutely. Uh, there, there were, oh, shoot, six, six or seven, uh, roads that were included in the, in the review. Uh, all, all the information is had. I mean, it's, it's out. I just, yeah, send it to you. Actually, I'll send it either through Angela or Steve Kopp. No problem.
Thank you. Any older business? New business? One, one update I'd just like to give you, perhaps you've seen it in the press the last couple of days, but, you know, we have officially announced that the library, that, uh, the small library that has opened on 510 Sherwood Avenue will be closing as of September the 30th. You know, we have kept that facility open 30 years beyond the library that we built originally to replace it. So we were down to about 50 patrons per month. So we have made that decision to move forward. Um, we're going to make that a history museum. There's, there has been a lot of interest. Stacy had a call this afternoon. Someone already wanting to donate something. Um, and that is our hope. So I ask that if you know anyone that has any kind of Sherwood memorabilia, if they would like to part with. Um, perhaps they found it in their aunts or uncles, grandparents, parents' stuff, you know, you had, you didn't know what to do with it, but you didn't want to throw it away. We'd love to have it. And, um, we think we're going to have a very successful building over there. It's going to take a few months to get it up and running. Uh, it's going to need some new carpet, paint the walls, a few things. But, um, a lot of interest. So, uh, if you have something personally you'd like to donate, maybe you've, um, you've got a campaign button or something that in the future when, as we all exit office, I think that would be appropriate to place those in there, uh, with some of the other things. So whatever you've got, um, reach out to your residents. We'd love to have it. In way of announcements, Sherwood's mayor's youth council, October 11th, will be showing the movie Shrek. Sherwood Fest will be September 28th, Sherwood Sports Complex. Please note that change in venue. It will be at the Sports Complex this year, not Sherwood Forest. Uh, maybe in that parking lot. Animal Shelter has numerous events listed here. Um, health, Happy Healthy Cat Month, uh, Happy Grandparents' Day, Celebrate Fall, World Rabies Day. So there's all kinds of opportunities to get you a pet. So take advantage of it. Are there any more announcements? Maybe adjourned?